Good evening. I'm going to call to order the Joint City Council, HRA and Planning Commission Work Session. It is May tenth at 5:45 PM. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez asked that I announce that she's unable to be here because she's out of town for a work commitment. And so with that, we're here to explore redevelopment goals and design guidelines for public and private property at sixteen hundred sixteen twenty and seventeen ten seventy-eighth Street East. And we are now using the overhead mics, so please speak loudly since you won't have the portable mics right next to you. And I'm going to turn it over to Community Development Director Melissa Pailman.
Great, thank you. So I am going to assume that most of you read the staff report, but just as a little background here, there are three properties that we're looking at tonight. It's sixteen hundred sixteen twenty and seventeen ten seventy-eighth Street East. So these are properties just to the south of seventy-seventh Street as you're getting the new tunnel under Highway seventy-seven. One of those properties we purchased a long time ago for the tunnel, that was in two thousand, we purchased the end property at seventeen ten. And then the other two have been privately owned up until the end of last year when Jerry Mathwig's estate through Tim Paps here donated to the HRA, the property at sixteen hundred seventy-eight, that's the old EcoSmart building. And then Mathwig Estate still owns the property in between. Very kindly, they have asked to work with us kind of on a scheme for development of all three parcels. They're all guided for regional commercial development. They have been for a long time in our comprehensive plan. The property at the end that the HRA has owned seventeen ten, we've always called the hotel parcel. But we haven't talked to this group about this land in a long time. So as we started talking to Tim, we thought we really need a vision for this. It's an exciting property and we want to get your input. And so we brought in HPGI to help us with that. You'll remember that they helped us with our overlay district at the Legion. They've been involved in a lot of plans for the city over the years and have done a great job for us. So tonight, we've got Lance Bernard and Brian Harches here to help us, lead us through a visioning exercise. And we also have Tim Paps here to help us with their vision for the property. Yeah, so I'll just turn it over to Lance and Brian.
Yeah, well, great, thank you. We really appreciate the opportunity to be part of this process and a lot of familiar faces and excited about having a conversation about what's possible at this site. And so we've got a little bit of kind of context information we want to present and some ideas that we've been exploring to give you guys the opportunity to weigh in on some of those ideas or other things that we haven't been thinking about for this site. And then ultimately really developing that unified front, that vision that we all can kind of adhere to and really be able to articulate what we want to have happen on the site and what are some of those kind of goals, design standards that we may want to create for this site as development comes in. And so for us, we're really helping with that conversation and then really going back and developing some kind of materials that staff and elected leaders like yourself can use to help demonstrate what some of those expectations are for the site as you start to work with potential developers for the area. So we're really trying to get this wrapped up in the next month. This is a fairly kind of quick burn, but we want to get through that process here fairly shortly. So Melissa provided you a little bit of that background information about the site. You know, this is that last kind of remaining site that is owned by a private property owner that's currently working obviously with the city and the HRA to really assemble this larger area, which is about three point seven acres into something hopefully unique that we can look towards for future development. And so as part of the comprehensive plan, as Melissa mentioned, has been guided for regional commercial for a very long time. And part of that general definition for this is really trying to create something along the four ninety-four corridor that provides a regional benefit and also a local benefit and really looking more at commercial uses as well. And certainly that's supported and aligns with the current zoning district for this area as well that supports those type of commercial uses that we're going to talk a little bit more about here in a minute. So a lot of the ideas that we're starting to kind of explore and think about really started with the hotel idea, which has been a topic of discussion for a couple of years with city staff. But can we also look at some of those other more interesting uses that really provide that regional destination and also that local benefit for the community? So some of those other uses we've been exploring or thinking about are something with more of an entertainment use, whether that's some type of restaurant or kind of indoor recreational component that will showcase some of those examples. Maybe tying back real quick to the hotel idea as well is really creating something that has meeting space. That's always been a discussion at the community level is are there opportunities to rent meeting space in the community? So playing on that hotel concept typically, you know, that you could have a hotel model that has that type of meeting space available for the community to use. Could be a mix of commercial uses on the site. It could potentially have a little bit of an office flavor to it, focusing more on the medical, public, semi-public kind of educational institutions as well. But we are not exploring residential or solely office uses for the site. It's not been envisioned for this area as part of the past comprehensive plan guidance as well. So really just kind of looking again back at those more commercial uses for the site. So to provide a little bit of context about the site, things that we're thinking about that are really kind of showcase some of the development opportunities and some of the potential challenges the developer may face when looking at this site. So we want to kind of lay that out, recognize some of those opportunities and challenges, certainly from a big picture and where the site fits within the region. It's close proximity to the airport, close proximity to Mall of America, certainly has high visibility from the interstate system at Cedar Avenue, which are huge pluses in drawing some more regional components to this area. Certainly the investments along seventy-seventh Street and the underpass at Cedar Avenue is certainly a great traffic circulation, better access for the area as well as people lead towards more of the Mall of America using the seventy-seventh underpass extension. So a lot of things that could be played off of from those development opportunities at a regional level, the proximity to some of these bigger regional uses are certainly a plus as well. We also want to kind of recognize what some of the development constraints might be. Certainly these development constraints are going to be driven by the type of development or the type of use, but these are just kind of general things that people need to be aware of. Certainly the size of the site limits development at three point seven acres. Certainly lot depth could play a challenge with certain developments as you look at kind of the irregularity of some of the parcels as you assemble it may cause some of those lot depth issues. Building height, we need to recognize that building height can only go up to eighty feet max because of its proximity to the airport. So that's really going to limit some of the stories that you could be working with. That could be anywhere from maybe six to eight stories in height for development on the site. Certainly some of the investments recently with the Cedar Avenue improvement, some grading, retaining walls that may kind of add some choke points to this corner that we need to be aware of. Access in and out of the site is pretty good, but that is something developers will always look at, how easy is it to get into the site and leave the site? So right now with some of the current investments here, may make access, enforce access a little bit more to Bloomington Avenue for a full access in and out of the site. We know that there's going to be some access modifications along four ninety-four at Twelfth Avenue in the coming years. That's going to, correct me if I'm wrong, is it eliminating the off-ramps?
The off-ramps, yes. And there are no off-ramps there. So it will just be a bridge.
Just be a bridge, yep, okay. You know, little nuances to the site, there is a billboard easement that would need to be vacated or worked around with any type of potential developer. So that's kind of one little flag, if you will, that we want to recognize as part of this effort. And certainly some of the larger utilities in the area could also be a constraint as well as you start to look at how to lay out this site for a future building, future development. So a couple of little things that we want to just kind of bring to the group's attention, things that we want to, we're not necessarily trying to design the site right now, we're just trying to at least call these to people's attention to be aware of as they look at this site for future development. But maybe I'll just pause there and see if the group has any other things that you see as development opportunities for the site or any kind of development challenges that we should be aware of that we're not recognizing right now? Yeah, council member?
Well, mostly just two questions, I guess. One is the right of way or the frontage road, that seventy-eighth Street that becomes Old Cedar Avenue that'll be dead ended, could that be part of the development site or does Mindot own that right of way and want to retain it?
Yeah, so we were just talking about that and trying to figure out who owns that right of way right now because would there potentially be the ability to move that closure closer to here to open this up a little bit more for development? I don't know how tied that improvement is to some of those federal dollars that are being used that could limit what you could actually do with that improvement. But does anybody, Melissa, do you know?
My guess is that it is Mindot, but I will follow up and get it out.
Yeah, certainly it would be nice to both get it closer to the interstate and hopefully have good visibility and just not waste the space on a dead end street that would only serve this development. The other thing I was curious about is like has Jaguar been approached at all, that if you, there were a substantial development that met their parking need, that you could buy or include that little notch that makes it so awkward?
That was another topic we, oh, sorry.
Nope, go ahead.
I think in our earlier conversations with staff, that was a topic for discussion if that dealership needed the additional space or if they were comfortable in what they had today in order to make that happen. Irregularity of the parcel shape combined with that easement for the billboard there makes that a little unique on that site, but that may be one way to resolve some of the irregularities with that site if that does become more of the adjacent use to the west.
Okay. And then my other thing, do you know where the retaining walls start for like the lowering of seventy-seventh Street to go into the tunnel? I actually haven't been out there.
The access points, as they're shown on there, you can, you can see the driveway entrances stay and it starts to grade down right about there.
Okay. So the one thing, I mean, both access to seventy-seventh is important, but also just hopefully that's a gateway that a lot of people are entering Ridgefield, acknowledging that retaining walls are already being built like now, so it's hard to work around it. But just as one example of something that I thought was done really well is Lake Street and Hiawatha Avenue where there was a really large, like, I don't know, fifteen foot retaining wall that got replaced with lower stories of a building and actually engaged that lowered Lake Street at Hiawatha. And although it would be a shame, of course, to see money wasted on a retaining wall that gets torn down in five or 10 years, that would be an amazing way to like make that part of the site rather than just.
Bring activity down to the street.
Exactly, have it lower levels that do something with seventy-seventh.
Right, yeah.
Are there other questions, Councilmember Waylon?
I was just going to ask staff, not that they would necessarily be coordinated, but the property northeast that is also empty on the other side of seventy-seventh? Remind me again, if you know offhand, what is that zoned for and would that be potentially complimentary or what do we imagine for that site?
Well, the challenge there that, and maybe Katie knows this, but the challenge there is the money that was used to purchase that site, so that can't be used for redevelopment. I think the idea was that we were trying to replace that funding with some other funding and I do not know if that happened. But the last I heard, that site wasn't available for redevelopment. It was going to need to stay like that. It could possibly be something that would serve the park, but it couldn't be developed.
It has to be a public purpose.
Okay.
Other questions?
I have one question. It looks like there's access from cars and things, but if it were turned into like an entertainment venue that teenagers would go to, is there pedestrian access that they can get there or how, have you thought about the pedestrian access?
Yeah, and those are all important things that would need to be talked about and more consideration depending on the type of use and how that use is being laid out on the site. But certainly I think we want to make sure that this is still a walkable pedestrian-friendly environment. I don't want to jump to any conclusions, but I think that's safe to say that's going to be one of kind of the goals for the site is really making sure that we have good pedestrian bicycle circulation and access to and from the site.
And the extension of Ridgefield Parkway that you see coming down there next to Washington Park, that will include crosswalks there to get from the north side to the south.
That's helpful. Other questions before the, Councilmember Trautman?
I was just going to say thank you for the clarification on the limitations of that property. And I would just say I don't have a particular idea, but maybe spending time ideating about what kind of public amenity could maybe collaborate or be supportive of the private development might be, I could just list three or four things, but I don't want to just come off half-cocked, but I think that's a, that's really helpful for me as I'm thinking about what we could, what we could do, whether it's a new spot for a swimming pool or you know, something that would be a regional draw for folks that are coming from the Mall of America potentially, but also I know that's a, I don't want to say that as in terms of that's feasible, but maybe just thinking in that direction.
Yeah, and I think that's certainly the input we want to hear tonight is really what are those kind of goals and aspirations for the site, those specific design elements that we want to really articulate. And then certainly as development comes in, it's going to be really working through all these little finite details and nuances of working on the traffic circulation access, really exploring the opportunities of moving access, you know, moving the cul-de-sac down. Those are the bigger things that will come later, but certainly important to recognize now and talk a little bit about that and let those potential developers know that those are things that would need to be worked on. So what we thought would be fun to really kind of get the group thinking a little bit more about what this site could be for a regional destination, a local community benefit, to really be a gateway into the community, is looking at these kind of entertainment uses, a mix of different ideas, if you will, to really maybe spark some ideas and some conversation. They're meant to just provide a little bit of kind of order of magnitude of what potentially could fit on the site when we start to think about these uses. So we have some examples that could potentially work here, but then also examples that demonstrate that order of magnitude again that is just probably not feasible to cram something in on a three point five acre site. So you'll see some of those examples here as well. And then just to reiterate again, a lot of these uses that we're presenting are really market driven. It's going to really be driven by a potential developer and their interest and much more research on their end to see if this really works for their business model as well. But hopefully there's some ideas and elements that come out of this that will help lead us into some kind of goals and design standards that we want to talk a little bit more about here as a group. So to start off, kind of the first Preston example we wanted to bring to the table is just a hotel. You know, that's been a discussion again that has been circling around the community for the last couple of years for the site. And that hotel concept could really be a number of different things. There's so many different examples out there. You pick one, there's so many different business models. And the hotel industry is always evolving with new concepts and new ways to accommodate their guests. And so what we were gravitating towards was a new model that we see the Marriott kind of rolling out with the Element Hotels that really focuses more on sustainability goals, really focuses more on mental wellness and personal wellness and to create really more of a calming environment and also accommodating that hotel space with some meeting space as well. So if we start to look at this hotel example of about four stories that fits within the confines of the height restrictions here, really still gets you a fairly large hotel footprint on this site when you look at how that existing kind of development fits within the parcel that we have laid out here. So all these precedent examples have the parcel that we're working with of three point seven acres to scale with a potential development or with a development example to give you that precedent kind of scale. So as I mentioned before, you know, four stories, fair amount of meeting room space, a fair amount of hotel accommodations and parked, can be parked on surface as well. So you can see that that fits pretty well within a three point seven acre site.
And there's some opportunity for additional space within that idea too. So either more surface parking to support additional conference room space as a part of that or another level or two of the hotel use itself. So some flexibility within that, but generally you see a hotel program with conference fits that site pretty well.
And the image that supports us out of Denver really does show a lot more attention to detail to architectural design and really building materials that make it a little more pleasing than just some of the older hotel models you may see out there.
That's a big aspect of the site too, is the architectural finish of the, gateway to the community coming in, or east side, excuse me.
A much grander kind of hotel example is the big development out in Gigan for the Omni Viking Lakes Hotel. We wanted to show this just because of the scale of it. When we start to look at much larger meeting room space, more banquet hall space, more accommodations for restaurants and cafes really starts to become much larger in scale. And when you start looking at many more rooms, you're really pushing that height restriction as well. So this is something that's not going to fit on the site, but it is just that example to kind of demonstrate the order of magnitude for a larger hotel with more accommodations for banquet room space and restaurants. So we kind of dive into some more of those kind of regional destinations, if you will, that have that more entertainment vibe to it. There's a lot of really cool things popping up in the metro area that we wanted to showcase. One fairly close to Ridgefield here is Pin Stripes, that entertainment use that has some bowling alleys, bocce ball courts, caters to restaurants and a little bit more event space as well, so keep that in mind. This type of kind of entertainment use can accommodate more functions, birthday parties, wedding events, meeting room space as well. And it's really designed to be flexible to accommodate different events, if you will, in this site. And so fairly small footprint that has a lot of opportunities to fit on a site like this. It is also parked with a parking garage, so that's kind of one unique thing to just spell out with some of these precedent examples is how do we park a certain development? And that's always seems to be the driving force of discussion when it comes to development. Do we have enough parking to accommodate a certain use? So more parking structured certainly has a higher cost value to it, costs a lot to build structure parking, but you can certainly maximize your space a little bit more if we want to explore and encourage that type of parking on a site like this.
And with this one, you can see the space allocation there, there's a little bit more area to the north. I mean, reconfiguration of some of the uses here, you could kind of work to have additional either restaurant or retail capacity potentially as part of like the West Elm, it's a big destination used there as well. But those uses also will then accommodate some level of surface parking with that, not that it will all be captured within a part of a structure. We need to think about a little bit of that balance of parking for space allocation.
With some of these kind of entertainment focused uses, a lot of them have been incorporating the roof deck patio. And so a lot of the examples we're showcasing have some of that. And I think that's something unique to think about for this site because of its proximity, of the site's proximity to the airport, there could be that kind of marketability to be able to see the airplanes landing and taking off. That is something that has worked well with some of the development in the area as well, that having those type of views creates kind of a different, unique destination and experience when visiting the site. So when we start to look at more of these kind of entertainment complexes, and one that comes to mind that we may be more familiar of is like a David Buster's out in Maple Grove. This is another kind of format like that, main event. They have a number of example, number of these throughout the Midwest that is really indoor restaurant dining, but really catered to more gaming, video games, interactive bowling games, laser tag, you name it. They're really putting a lot of those uses into a fairly large box development. And sometimes when you think about some of these indoor events like this are, let me back up, some of the precedents that we're seeing of like the reuse of big box stores are putting in more of the bouncy houses and certain things like that, but they're very square in nature. They're not very interesting to look at. They're really avoiding lots of light coming into the building because all the gaming is really dependent on that interaction with videos and more lighting. So you don't really get that kind of feel of being able to look out the window. It's really kind of these blank slate walls, if you will. But requires a lot of parking. In this case, a lot of surface parking in this example here, which really puts a lot of pressure on fitting something like this on the site to really self-park it and have that larger scale indoor entertainment venue. This is a kind of a cool new business model that was just kind of highlighted in the Business Journal a few months ago and it is Smash Park. And it's that combination of pickleball courts and dining and drinks. And they are based out of Des Moines. They've opened a number of locations and in the process of developing a few new ones and are really trying to find a market here in Minneapolis. And so this was an excellent opportunity to kind of showcase what they're trying to achieve with their business model with more roof duck views, outdoor patios, some outdoor indoor gaming and that kind of dining experience that really speaks to that more regional, unique destination that could serve the site. The footprint is fairly small, thirty square feet of indoor space, fifteen thousand square feet of outdoor space, and you can see fits pretty well within the current confines of this, you know, general parcel line for the site. So something that we could consider for something like this. Little larger scale kind of entertainment outdoor use is Pop Stroke. These are popping up more. This is actually being run by Tiger Woods and his company in trying to create more of these elaborate kind of putt-putt courses, but much more designed for the skilled golfer. So you've got a lot more bunkers, a lot more rolling hills. Something like this would be unique, but could be challenging to fit on this site. But again, another kind of option to think about what we'd want to create for a unique destination for the area. Really this site really drives more on the outdoor square footage. The building footprint itself is fairly small, so another thing to take in consideration when looking at the amount of land that's needed for more of these outdoor spaces that are getting larger in scale. So an excellent example of outdoor space that requires a lot of land would be your Topgolf one in Brooklyn Center that is really too large to fit on a site like this in Ridgefield. So again, just another kind of Preston example to demonstrate that order of magnitude where, you know, the building square footage is super small, it's just that landmass that they need to accommodate their outdoor gaming venues. And then kind of a little unique more, I hate to use the word strip commercial, but I'm going to use the word strip because it is really kind of a smaller focused indoor activity of skydiving location, very small square footage that then is really attached to a strip of commercial uses. So two fairly decent sized commercial pads that also are able to self-park within about a three and a half acre site. So we really could start to think a little bit more about a mix of commercial uses on the site. We don't necessarily need to gravitate towards one specific use. There could be multiple uses on this site. So in this case, you know, we still have a little bit of that entertainment drop and then certainly some commercial uses within this precedent. It doesn't really require a whole lot of parking, so creates a little bit more flexibility with this site when you start to look at the smaller square footage for some of the commercial uses. And then one of the kind of last precedents we wanted to talk a little bit about was more of that kind of office, larger kind of medical office space. Number of examples along the four ninety-four corridor, they certainly get larger in scale, you know, two to four, six stories, if you will. This one is being a more of a medical campus that has really maximized their square footage and the number of stories on this site, certainly sandwiched in a little bit more along the interstate. But in this case, they are doing more, a little bit of surface parking and a structured parking deck as well to really accommodate the uses here as well. So there are some opportunities maybe to look at more of that medical campus, but to some degree that market may be fairly saturated. I don't know how much demand there really is to create new medical space given the amount that is there today within the metro region.
Back up to that one second. The other thing to consider, I think, on this site is the orientation of the building and the placement of that. This really has a great front, if you will, out towards both four ninety-four and France Avenue, doesn't allow for, say, parking to wrap around the front of the building. Parking is balanced and kind of almost hidden back behind the building, although the arrival experience, you get a wrap all the way around like you would as you drive a car into the site. It does have a front door, provides an opportunity to head to surface parking or to the ramp or drop off and pickup as a part of this. So. So that all plays into the layout of the site and understanding what, where that building really wants to be, whether it's this use or any use on the site.
Certainly the architectural detail to the building as well, you know, being something very pleasing landscaping that really could serve, you know, as some ideas for how you want to treat this as a gateway into your community. And then we wanted to just kind of find one of those precedent examples that have a little bit of that mix of institutional, kind of private institutional use, some commercial space, some office space, little retail maybe in the mix of it. So one with the Market Point Development along 494 in Bloomington, if you're familiar with that, is kind of anchored in the front by Ike's Restaurant. And then you do have Rasmussen College within that building, some office space, some, I believe there's a like a cost cutters or something in the building as well that really caters more to the office tenants as well. Office is really hard. It's not something we're, I think we want to envision for this site. The amount of office space coming back and filling the vacancies right now after COVID is really challenging. There's a lot of vacant space out there. There really isn't a demand for that. And we don't think we're really going to return back to that full occupancy with a lot of that, that office space that we see sitting vacant today. And it's really going to be a different kind of hybrid model on how businesses use, utilize that space to date. But the story here is really, again, that really kind of compact development that's larger in scale for six stories can provide a lot of different uses when you start to think of that first floor traditional mixed use with a restaurant and a little bit of retail. Gives you a little bit of perspective of how that may kind of fit here as well. Parking with the size of a building like this and the square footage really would be driven by a lot more structured parking as well. And certainly in this case with this precedent, the structured parking is really serving a lot more uses in the area as well. So that's kind of the math game with a development like this and what you would really need on site to accommodate this use. So those are just a smattering of some ideas, some precedents that we were starting to kind of think about that could potentially fit on this site, really focusing more on something unique, more of that regional destination, leveraging the proximity to the airport Mall of America, really maximizing the visibility from the interstate system and even that kind of roof deck view that you could possibly try to encourage happen to create that as something, an interesting place people want to visit. So there's a lot of different components. We kind of started kicking around that we have to take into consideration for any future development, depending on whatever use that might be. I think it's very clear, we always want this to be a walkable and bikeable community. And this is an area that we want to support that as well and have good pedestrian bicycle accesses, access to it as well. We really want to recognize that this is largely driven also by private contributions and private property owners. So they need to be part of this discussion as well as we move forward with really making sure we develop a unified front with what everybody collectively wants to see happen with this space. And then, you know, how do we integrate public spaces into this as well? How do we create it as that local, local space for residents to utilize as well? So lots of ideas, lots of things that hopefully are kind of bouncing around your head. We just really want to open this up for discussion about what you're thinking about, what we really need to be aware of as we start to explore and really highlight your expectations for this site.
Commissioner Hanson.
Well, do you see any potential for a hybrid model that would combine a hotel and one of these kind of entertainment destination venues? Or would the site just not have the capacity for that?
Yeah. It might be really tight, you know, with that kind of model to accommodate both hotel space and entertainment use. I think it would lean more towards probably a restaurant hotel model, if you will. But trying to accommodate some of those indoor gaming centers and then working that hotel model, I'm not sure how that would work. I don't know if there's any good examples out there that mimic that, that kind of hybrid model.
I guess initially what I was kind of thinking of, I know on the avenue there's, you know, the combination of like the water parks and hotels. And I wouldn't recommend going in the direction of water parks. I think that and Margaret Sancho. But, but you know, looking at maybe some of these other things like, you know, I know some of these are quite intensive, but you know.
Well, that pin stripe, I think, fits that size and scale.
You know, something like the iFly or something, something that would be a little smaller scale.
Yeah. Yeah, I think to Brian's point where you're going with this, some of those smaller scale pin stripe iFly could, could fit with maybe a hotel mix as well. So it really kind of goes back to testing the development capacity for this site and the type of scale that could fit there. And that's where we're kind of in this position where we're not really trying to design a site. We're just trying to at least articulate the goals. And if, if the goal for this group collectively is we really want to create a mix of entertainment uses, we, we can express that and showcase that as part of the kind of final piece to this.
Commissioner Kneeling.
I have just a few thoughts. I was, I was drawn mostly to the entertainment uses. I, I think the opportunity to draw people from the airport and the mall year round makes me think of indoor uses. And that the iFly, you know, skydiving proximity to the airport, just, that felt like a natural fit. I think people would come to the mall and be really excited to try something like that.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, that's where we've really been gravitating towards more of the entertainment uses because it does have that, that regional draw, but it also is a local, you know, asset as well. So I think any one of those models really accommodates really everybody, right? Than, than just trying to hone in on, on, you know, an office use that really doesn't provide any unique benefit.
Or an art hotel.
Chair Rudolph.
Yeah, I really like the entertainment complex kind of idea, you know, you know, whether, yeah, I know Cheska did kind of like an entertainment meeting complex with a restaurant and a curling club. You know, hey, even curling would work well here, you know, even on a small scale. Whether, you know, in a pin stripes kind of idea, you know, it's, it's a large sport here, maybe not the rest of the country, but something that maybe can be used. I liked the one idea where they had things that could be used in the summer as well as the winter because we have a short, we have beautiful summers here, but they're not real long.
You know, what are people's thoughts on that kind of year round use? Because certainly some of the examples limit some of that use during the harsh winters in Minnesota. Is that, just want to get your thoughts on what this should be.
Again, thinking of the, the amount of travelers that come to that specific area. When they're coming during the holidays, when they're coming during spring break, they're not going to be able to play outside usually. So I just think the volume of visitors coming to the area might make that indoor space more appealing to me.
Councilmember Whalen.
I, I think my main thought is that I really hope that whatever this site is, is something that really does draw people, but also is accessible to the literal neighbors. And I'm just thinking of that, I mean, this corner of town, not that it is a good thing that it was concentrated that way, but it's a concentrated area of poverty. And I think if we put something in there where you're paying 80 bucks a pop to go indoor skydiving, that just feels completely disconnected from the people who live next door. And so I guess I was more drawn toward something like the, I forget what it's called, the brewery or restaurant with pickleball or something. And I, like the Minneapolis Ciderie is a similar thing, but the pickleball is indoors. I do think that having more indoor options makes sense. In addition, like, I, I guess I was a little surprised when you mentioned the airport and said, then great, outdoor patio because it's really noisy. And so I, I don't know. I think some people would enjoy it. Some people would be like, why are we outside? It's really loud.
Yeah.
But yeah, mostly I, I guess personally I would rather see a hotel and that meeting space be something that I, I mean, who knows what they charge to rent the space, but that people could use for their birthday parties or family gatherings or whatever and can bring in their own food and not, well, who knows their rules about catering and such. But I don't know. I guess those, those to me feel like uses that could actually be taken advantage of by the people who live there and not just like in like the car dealership. I suppose neighbors may go there every several years, but like, but it could be a place that people are actually like, I might go there regularly. And the last thing I'll say, I don't know if, I, I know we are still looking for a home for benefactor. I don't know if this site would make sense.
I have already offered it to them.
So.
Our, our parts, not yours.
I, I think if, it's obviously bigger than the site they were looking at. It would involve whether a hotel along with them or more space, entertainment space. But I, that to me feels more in line with the character of this part of town.
Councilmember, hey, for Larry.
I'm just thinking about, well, you know, seeing all these examples is really exciting. It's like, oh, cool, we could have a pin stripe, so we could have this or that. But then I'm also thinking about like this corridor and like, I feel very painted into a corner here in general of, there's a lot of residential here, which is, is good because it's affordable residential, but it's unlikely to turn over because we prioritize keeping that. There are these two gigantic car dealerships that really kind of dominate the corridor. There's the park, there's single family residential that is designated to stay a single family residential behind a wall. So it's like, even if you could get a pin stripes here, is this really like broadly in Ridgefield where we would want something like that? Because it, it seems like you'd have all this activity that realistically only body's ever going to drive to and they're going to have use of the highway. So I, I hear that like if the proximity to the Mall of America and the visibility to highways are what bring a really attractive like entertainment venue, by all means build it here. But if I could just like pick any spot in Ridgefield to have like active nightlife, social activities, this probably wouldn't be the place I'd really want it. That said, I still looked at your examples and it is like, and I'm glad you referred to the main event in Kansas or whatever as, as a big box because it really is just a big box and a cute outfit. Like it's, it's nothing, you know, pin stripes is so attractive like on Titania Lakes. It's such a good example of something that is both good design and provides that entertainment value. So I guess I don't, I don't have a specific point here, but it's just like, to me, if, if the visibility to the freeway is what brings it, that's great. But I don't specifically, big picture Ridgefield in mind, want entertainment here more than I would want it like downtown at the hub.
Councilmember Tropman.
Chair Supple. A couple of thoughts similar to just echoing what Councilmember Whalen said. I do have some concerns about just how disconnected like an iFly would feel to, to the neighborhood. And like as much as, I think it would be fun. I've never done it, but I would do it. Fun thing to do. It, it also seems like the kind of thing that in an economic downturn would be the first bit of discretionary income that would be sacrificed. And I could, it takes zero imagination to see something like that sitting vacant for five years also. And so I, I'm concerned because that is just the, the point that people will, will get to know Richfield from leaving the airport. It was Motel Six for a couple of generations. And as we think about generationally, how do we want to present ourselves? I, I think the medical facility, I know that might be overgrown, but having a medical facility that's so close to the airport and so close to the Mall of America and other, you know, a surgery destination spot seems, seems worthy of the corner and a, an incredible social good. And also probably maximizes our tax base in that corner also. And so, and it brings people to Ridgefield maybe for several days in ways that would draw them in towards our restaurants and in towards other amenities. So that was one thought. And then the second thought was, I think it was just maybe mentioned at some point, you know, larger or mid, mid-sized athletic facilities that, that could be rented for tournaments that are coming through the region, which also could maybe create an opportunity for, you know, a, a larger basketball facility on the public land area. And that, that could be, that could be rented to and create more space for a tournament environment. There's already a lot of hotels there. It could also double as meeting space. So that's just something else that I would throw out.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sturza.
I like the idea of entertainment use on this property. We heard that a lot of excitement over our community center. So I think that there's, I understand the regional aspect of it, and, but I also hope that we consider the local aspect, consider the neighborhood and what's appropriate. I would love to see something that older kids might have activities to do there. I think that there's not enough for older kids in the community to do. So some sort of, whether it's gaming or fields or whatever, I think that would be really nice. Yeah, I guess those are my thoughts.
Can I ask a question? What is the, is there a plan or part of a system plan idea for that park in particular? Have any of these sort of three quadrants of that intersection ever been thought of collectively to help think about an identity around the new intersection and that general gateway location or district or? Because there's been some conversation about sort of the remnant piece to the Northeast. But I do hear a lot of entertainment and what happens with the neighborhood conversation tonight too. Is there a way in which aspects of that park could be re-envisioned to help sort of balance out all three sides of that intersection with that site? And, and maybe that will happen organically? I don't know. I don't know what's really tethered to that park longer term as a part of it, but.
Right. Well, there are soccer fields in that park that are well utilized. The real need that our recreation department has identified at that park is actually parking because the pickleball courts are very popular.
Okay.
And so are the soccer fields.
Okay.
I don't know, you know, we did a parks master planning process as part of our last comp plan. I don't know that it prioritized in particular investment in this park related to like the new Ridgefield Parkway.
Okay. It looks like they're adding a little bit of parking like on street there to the Parkway as a part of it, yeah, but.
And I think there had been some talk of actually using that extra space for overflow parking.
Sure.
Because it's needed, but yeah, I don't think, holistically, I don't think we have looked at this.
Okay. Just curious, what, what aspects would be there? If those are really important components, pickleball, I see all.
The pickleball is very, very popular. There are tournaments held there. They're, they're our best courts. Yeah. Which is why our, which is why our city hall pickleball team was really excited about this smash pickleball.
Councilmember Whalen, is this in the, about the park or the new town?
Yeah. I was just going to quickly say, I, for that reason exactly, I think anything with indoor pickleball would be a huge hit because people are used to going to that space already for that. And then briefly, the comment I forgot to say before, very strongly feel we do not need a strip mall on this site.
Are there new ideas or comments? All right, so I'll weigh in. When I look at that site, there's a number of possibilities. I'm not real thrilled with the idea of a hotel because that creates minimum wage jobs. So if you're looking for like event space, I think it should be tied to something other than a hotel. I like the idea if we could find kind of a medical use to it because that's creating a lot of well, jobs that pay well. And it would be bringing those jobs and economic opportunity to the people that live in the area. Another need that has been brought up, I believe Commissioner Sturza mentioned, is we need activities for teens. So if we create something that's entertainment, I want to make sure that the teens can also access it. I don't want it to be like adult only. I want to be, you know, if, if a 16-year-old can go over there and play pickleball, great. But I don't want to have it so, oh, you have to be 21. So I want to make sure that we have access for the kids that they can utilize that if we do it as entertainment. And I'm cool with putting different things together. Like if you want to have some of the entertainments bind with like community gathering space for like weddings and things or events. But I think if. But I think if the market isn't totally saturated, I would love to see like a medical building of that type there. And then something that's totally outside the box, that nobody's mentioned and I don't know if it's even possible, but that segment of town is a food desert. And so I'm also thinking if we could make a space for like small businesses and food mar- you know, like farmer's market type thing and have like a space where a lot of entrepreneurs are looking for a place to go. So some kind of a global market type thing, but I don't know if that fits the profile or where that is. But I'll just throw it out there in the spirit of brainstorming.
Sure.
So is there anybody else that has anything they want to, Commissioner Kneeling?
Thank you, first off, I love food, so that's great. Another total brainstormer deal was a concert venue.
All right, Commissioner Onasor.
Yeah, I like the smash park idea because of the green space. So I do always want to incorporate as much green space into anything, but I was also thinking of a long-term care facility. Something in the medical aspect that might be, I don't know what the need for is with population going up, that's going to be a need.
Other ideas, councilmember Whalen?
I liked your idea of, and I'm thinking specifically of, you know, like the Midtown Global Market or Kagan Case in St. Paul or the, I always forget the name of it, but the smaller one that's by Stone Arch Bridge. But yeah, something like that could be cool. I also wonder, also in the realm of like entertainment spaces, but I don't know how many indoor playgrounds there are around, but I know especially in winter, families are looking for that kind of thing. But I agree with the comments about teens needing something and this is obviously ran to the little younger kids, but also would be open to that.
Brookview is a good model for that, larger indoor play area. It's the one in Golden Valley right off of three ninety-four there, that's integrated with the clubhouse then for that golf course. They have a kind of an outside programmed area for bocce ball within that larger indoor play and two or three different larger scale conference room space. Land Use Coalition is based out of there, we have.
Is that monthly meetings there?
Is that private or is, I thought that was public?
That is public, yep.
Okay.
But that's the program for that sort of idea, right?
Other ideas, councilmember Troutman?
I just want to second the, the thinking about, about a Midtown Global style cultural market. There, there are groups that, that approach me regularly looking and wanting to do that in Richfield. I think it would be hard to find something that was more authentically Richfield than something like that. That could also be a regional draw, so it seems like a great idea.
Commissioner Serra.
Thank you. A lot's been said about the new underpass opening up a lot of access to this site. I just want to remind folks that, that access will also open up a new transit opportunity through there. Bus route five forty will be rerouted along Seventy-seventh Street right past this site once that underpass opens. So that opens up access to, well, to folks who would be going to this site to, to visit whatever's there, but also to workers as well, no matter what the site becomes, there's a real opportunity for new access facing Seventy-seventh Street. So I, I don't want to see this site completely turn its back to Seventy-seventh Street to the neigh- both to the neighborhood and to folks who are coming, who need to come in from that side of the site.
Other ideas or comments?
I'm, I'm listening.
Development Director Palman, is there any other kinds of feedback you need from us?
Well, we've got a lot to work with and I think this is really the input we're, we're looking for. To really just start to kind of dial in what some of the overarching goals are for the site. What are some of those general aspirations for the site? Some of the design elements that we can start to talk a little bit more about. There's, there's some general themes for sure that have come out of today's discussion. I think I'm hearing here at least, one of the big things is, is really making sure it is, it is a site that does serve the community and it creates some synergy with the neighborhood. I think that's one thing that I've, I've heard, kind of looking back at my notes. There's a, a little bit of appetite for everything. So I think that's kind of the challenge for us moving forward is really trying to hone in on, on what we really want to accomplish for goals. Is it really about creating X, Y, and Z? So I don't have the answers for that.
I heard, yeah, I heard more of entertainment focus, the ability to entertain medical, should that kind of be an opportunity on the site. Maybe less intrigued by hotel. But meeting space is still important. So how could that get integrated in a potential combination with entertainment use at the same time? Those are some of the things I heard, plus that integration of what's to the north and the response of that development site to Seventy-seventh Street. So it's not walled off or disconnected from the neighborhood as a part of that piece. That may have to come over time because yes, the wall probably will get, have to get built and then we'll have to figure out how to integrate development with that potentially. How about intensity of use? Should this site feel like it is mostly structured, structured parking? Should, because this gets into scale and intensity of development, this is a very prominent site. Two major interstates, a lot of visibility as a part of that. But on the flip side of that, it's right adjacent to a neighborhood and a neighborhood park at the same time. So thoughts on how to balance density and intensity, just got reactions from those.
Yeah, you read my mind because I already have a hand raised when you said that, to talk about that. I would really like to see a building height minimum that gets us as close to that maximum as possible. I would say the airport has already given us our balance, I would see no problem with an eighty-foot building there. I think it would be a shame to get like, I actually don't have any issue with a hotel, but a three-story like discount hotel would be a shame. I think that would kind of squander the site. Something that is prominent and visible to Seventy-seventh, so ideally as little surface parking as possible.
Yep.
As much building coverage and as much height as apparently the plans will allow us.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Hanson.
I would, I would echo the same, same sentiment. I think that, you know, on this particular site, you know, with the high visibility, with the highways close proximity to the airport and Mall of America, I think it just really calls for a more high intensive use.
Member Troutman?
I was, I was just wondering if it would create some capacity to build, if the, if the park needs more parking. I know it still concerns some councilmembers, in particular my colleague, Councilmember April O'Leary, but to, to maybe use some park, would parking be a potential permissible use on the non-developed parcel on the other side of the road?
Yes.
Not that I'd want to see that whole thing become a parking lot, but just as one potential use.
Commissioner Kneeling?
Thank you. Well, we're talking about intensity, I, I wanted to make sure I understood access for cars coming from the interstate. And I'm, I'm trying to make sure I have it right. If they're coming from Seventy-seventh Street through the airport, they have great access. But if they're on Cedar or if they're on four ninety-four, do they need to go to Portland or Sixty-six to come all the way back down? Twenty-fourth. Yes.
Yes, if you're, if you're on four eighty-four, you can exit at twenty-fourth.
Yep.
Or you need to go to Portland because twelve will be closed. From, from inside the neighborhood, if you're coming from the north, you'll no longer be able to get here on Cedar. You'll need to come down Richfield Parkway or the extension of Richfield Parkway that will be created there. Or you could come down on twelfth.
But I think that's a great point, is to be able to broadly illustrate the access to the site. Like you really need to get off about a mile and a half or half mile before you get to the site in order to continue to access it. Otherwise, it's a double back from Portland.
And then you've got angry people driving on Seventy-seventh.
Well, I mean, I, I think that really speaks to your need for this to be a destination.
Correct.
People need to want to get here, you know, it's not, I'm going to pop in there. It's, I am going here.
Right.
So you need something that draws those people, that gets them to put it into the goal.
Councilmember Whalen and then Chair Rudolph.
I just wanted, wanted to echo the intensity, I think maximizing, if we started going higher than eighty feet, I'd start to worry about like the park and such. But I think having, having that already as the max makes sense. I do think like stepping it down as it gets closer to the park, if possible, might make some sense. But yeah, honestly, if anything, I, I would love for that sound wall cutting off the final block of our community to get torn down at the park and this could be a new sound wall of a giant building. I don't know, so I, I think having, if ever we were to have a dense site, putting it in this corner of the freeways makes sense.
My question would be for you guys, developers, with accessibility being more limited in the future on this site. Will that limit some of the things that we can develop it for? Obviously, you know, you need to be able to bring people in.
I don't necessarily think that the quick off at twelfth, losing that is any worse than, I mean, gaining the bigger access you get and the direct connection to the Mall of America. I think that's a bigger win for that site longer term. And the ADT, the, the traffic volumes on those roads aren't going to change. It's still going to be the highest visibility corner, you know, for a long time coming. So that I think is really what's going to drive it. And it, it will become a destination and people will figure out how to get to that spot. The nuance is going to be how to balance that kind of trip generation and traffic with a connection to the neighborhood and the, the connection to the north there too. So I think those are some of the subtleties that get into, into the site design of, of that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Making sure it's connected to that nine-mile trail is huge.
Anything else that anyone wants to weigh in on?
Yeah, I don't think, I, I think that's it, so our mission here, Tim, is there anything that you wanted to add?
Oh, it's been very informative for me, just a little more background. I got on the John Stark, Melissa Pilman bandwagon several months ago. And so that's why I'm here, I'm interested in, you know, Melissa made it pretty clear early on that she wasn't looking for another car dealership. And I thought, that makes sense to me. And so I'm along for the ride and maybe some participation.
And as part of that, we want to make sure that, you know, it's something we talked about with the HRA when we accepted the donation of the property, was that we want to make sure that we somehow incorporate an honor to the Zenathletic family who gave us this extraordinary piece of property to work with and are now going to partner with us. So we hope that you'll continue to talk to us about that part of it too. So next steps, Lance and Brian are going to go back and kind of noodle on that, we'll meet with them again. The idea here is that when a developer comes in, because we do have developers knocking on our door, on Tim's door about this site, we'll be able to tell them generally, our community is looking for something that will provide a benefit to its community, provide higher paying jobs, provide visibility and draw people into our community who are traveling to the Twin Cities, to the mall, through the airport. We, we want to be able to give them good feedback so that when they come in with a proposal, we're not saying that's, that's nothing like we want, you wasted your time. So that's the goal, we'll work with Lance and Brian on that and hopefully have something for you guys to react to in coming months.
Awesome.
Well, thank you for your generous donation and thank you for coming to speak with us all and we stand adjourned.